Councillors, we're going to start with our prayer before we call the meeting to order. Councillor Salk, I think it's yours to do. Thank you.
Our God, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together as council and community members, and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to hear from those from Alberta Health Services and help us to better understand the opioid crisis and the things that we can do as a community to help. Grateful, Father, for the favorable circumstances that we meet in, and particularly grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy and those who have sacrificed also that we could meet under these circumstances. We're grateful for this community and the surrounding area and for all the good people that reside in this part of the province. And we ask a blessing upon this meeting that will have Thy Spirit in the things that we do and the deliberations that we make. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will call this meeting to order this thirteenth day of November two thousand and eighteen. We are waiting for delegations, so in the essence of time, we will start our meeting, and when the delegation comes, we will give them the floor. So we just called the meeting to order. We need to adapt the agenda. Councillor Salk, any questions regarding the content of this agenda? Nothing? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. So we will go to item five, the adoption of minutes. You had two minutes, two sets a minute. October twenty-third was the regular council meeting. Let's start with that. Councillor Barnes?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on October twenty-third.
Okay. Any question regarding the content? No? I'm going to have a sore neck by the end of today. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Now, there was the organizational meeting. Councillor Banbury, you want to move?
Make a motion to move acceptance or approval of the organizational meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen.
All right. Questions? Seeing none. All in favor? That marks officially one year as a new council, and we have three more years to work together. So let's go to item six, bylaw and policy. The first item under six A is a garbage bylaw, one, six, two, three, C. If you recall, we had seen the rates, but we had not seen the bylaw that governs those rates. So what we have here is that bylaw is not affecting anyone, is just a formal approval of those rates. So what we can do in that case, we can have a motion for first, second, approve for third, and then have third. Okay, so that's the order of the motions.
I'll move first reading of bylaw sixteen, twenty-three, C.
All right. Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. So we need a second motion?
I move second reading of bylaw sixteen, twenty-three, C, garbage bylaw amendment.
All right. All in favor? Thank you.
I'll move to allow third reading.
Thank you. Third, are we all in favor of moving to allow for third? I can't see you guys, so that's pretty tough. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. So now we can have a third.
I will make that motion to pass through, to have third read for the garbage bylaw number sixteen, twenty-three, C.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Thank you. So now we have the proper document to govern those rates. The six B, Jill, maybe you can help me and let me know if the Electoral Distribution Tariff Bylaw sixteen, forty-nine, D is available or not?
It is in your package. We've got the updated rates, so we are asking for first reading on this bylaw is to approve the new rates as well as the fee schedule at the back for things that we do, and also includes our service connection fees.
Okay. So the rates only reflect the changes made by our provider?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. All right. So, Councillor Banbury?
I'll move first reading of the Electoral Distribution Tariff Bylaw sixteen, forty-nine, D.
Okay. Are there any question regarding those rates we discussed that we would pass on, the changes via that bylaw?
Just a point, a comment for the benefit of the community. This first reading just says that we're going to approve what is being passed on to us. We're not adding to it. It's something that's being passed on to us directly by border. We have no choice in the matter but to approve it passing on. It's been approved by the utility, the public utility board.
Okay. Thank you so much. All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's move to six C. First of all, I want to welcome you all to this meeting. It's really awesome to see you here. I'm very pleased to see so many of you here, and I know some more will be coming. So thank you for taking the time. And thank you for the Channel thirty-two, and thank you for Temple City Star. Thank you. So six C, the Library Bylaw fifteen, thirty-nine, B. That one, Councillor Barnes, you want to talk to it?
I do. The, this new bylaw is a result of some problems that the library board has been having. They've been referred to under four different names, and whenever they apply for grants to help with offset the costs at the library, it's been difficult because sometimes it goes in this name or that name, the people who are giving the grants don't recognize. So we moved to bring everything into one umbrella, so it's one name, there's no problem with recognizing who the grant's being requested by. So therefore, we've come up with a bylaw to make an amendment to, once and for all, make the library known who they really are. And so I want to move, and I'll just mention, whereas section sixty-four of the Municipal Government Act, being chapter M twenty-six, revised statutes of Alberta two thousand, provides for the passing of bylaws to amend other bylaws, and whereas the library board has requested that the name of the library board be consistent throughout the library board bylaw for the purpose of expediting application processes with the provincial government, now therefore the council of the town of Cartson in the province of Alberta duly assembled and acts as follows. One, that the name of the municipal library board in the town of Cartson be known as the Town of Cartson Library Board as per part one, section three, part four of Libraries Act. And two, that all references to the library board in bylaw fifteen, thirty-nine, B amended to read the Town of Cartson Library Board operating as the Jim and Mary Curle Library. So I move that we approve the library board bylaw amendment, bylaw fifteen, thirty-nine, B.
Okay. So we are going to move first reading, second reading, allow for third, and do third, because there again, the citizens are not affected by that. Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
I'll move second reading of bylaw fifteen, thirty-nine, B.
Okay. Question? None. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I make a motion to allow third reading.
Councillor Barnes has allowed?
Bylaw fifteen, thirty-nine, B.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve third reading for library bylaw fifteen, thirty-nine, B.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Since we have our delegations, we will stop our proceeding at this time and allow for our delegation to do their presentation. Thank you so much for being here. And I know we have Dr. Verani there, maybe you can wave to us all? Thank you. And we have Dr. Afridi. Thank you so much. And you have somebody else with you, I'm not sure.
Carol, my name is Carol Griffiths-Mann. So who's Jeff? Where's Jeff?
Jeff is not there, but Jill is there. So Jill will be there to help you. Thank you. So if you'd like to come to the podium, we are going to take seats on the front, and you can come also do your presentation.
First of all, good evening, everyone, and thanks for inviting us to speak on this important topic. So today we are here to talk about opioid use disorder and what are the evidence-based effective treatment for that disorder. So the objectives are to understand what are these opioids and how they impact a visual, a community, and a society, and what are the treatments available? And also, one more thing, like from a population health perspective, how does a treatment benefit society from the cost perspective on the whole? So I'm sure most people have seen the news and aware about this opioid epidemic which we are experiencing all over in Canada. So what are opioids? These are the drugs, basically pain relieving drugs. You might have heard these names, codeine, fentanyl, morphine, hydrocodone, hydromorphone, and medical heroin. So these are opioid drugs. Now, next slide. So there are two types of opioid formulations. Thank you so much. Short-acting, which we use for short-term period for acute pain, which are morphine, hydromorphone, which are given after any major surgeries, even in the emergency room, and some are long-acting opioid drugs, which are used for cancer pain and other chronic pains, for example, extended-release morphine or methadone or Savaxone. They are also used for the long-term management. Okay, just press this. Sharon, can you help? Okay. It's the other way. Okay. Now, let's see, what are the short-term side effects of opioids? Opioids are good medications. However, as you know, all allopathic medications have side effects. So do opioids. In the short term, if they are used for a short-term period, they may cause nausea, vomiting, some headache, confusion, which can lead to fall and fracture, especially in elderly. It can cause drowsiness, and if taken more than the prescribed amount, it can very well lead to poisoning, intoxication as well. And people who are using it might experience constipation as well. And yes, most people would experience euphoria, like feeling high effect too, even if they are given in a prescription, people will experience that too, and impotence in man as well. Now, the long-term side effects, it can cause tolerance. Tolerance is where people require the medication in a higher amount to get the same effect. That is known as tolerance. So all opioids have a tendency to cause tolerance, and they can cause physical dependence. That one of the most serious side effect of opioids, that's why opioids are prescribed very cautiously, especially in these days, so that people are warned about these side effects, and they should not be prescribed for a longer term. It can cause liver damage, it can cause infertility in women as well. And one of the things which most people are not aware about opioids, like it can worsen the pain, that opioids may induce what we call this condition as hyperalgesia, like their pain sensitivity is enhanced if they are on opioids, which is a paradoxical effect. Now, the serious side effect, as I said, once they develop tolerance, once they are physically dependent on it, then the patient develops substance use disorder, which the Centre for Mental Health and Addiction in Toronto, they describe addiction as four Cs. The person gets cravings nonstop, they lose control of the amount of frequency of use because now they are dependent. If they are not taking, they are getting physical withdrawals, like nausea, vomiting, they are very agitated, they are unable to sleep, and lots of body aches, and they have no control left, they are no option but to use it. So they use it again and again, so compulsion to use. And now the drug has taken over, it's a chronic brain disease, like it's a compulsive disorder. They have no choice, despite the consequences. Now they have no money, they have lost their job, right? They are unable to afford. Knowing those serious consequences, they still keep on going and keep on using these Some of the risk factors for opioid addictions is the environment, which is now, in these days, it has played a bigger role because now we see patients who are getting opioids from their doctors, if they have been abandoned by their doctor, now they had no way but to turn to street for the illicit fentanyl, right? For the street drugs. So it's environment, if it's easily available on the street, people have more, you know, opportunity to use them and get dependent on them. And if somebody has mental health issue, anxiety, or depression, like those people have a higher vulnerability to abuse opioids. Then people who have poor coping skills to manage their feelings, thoughts, like they wanna just numb their feelings, and because of the euphoria effect of opioids, they also tend to get addicted to these medications if they are easily available. Some people might end up using them if they are under peer pressure, if other people at work, or in college, university, or wherever they are, if they are using, they end up trying and ultimately getting dependent on it. The early you use it, early exposure in life, if parents are using and children are getting exposed knowingly or accidentally, if they end up trying but taking it, like we have seen, that two percent of the Canadians, they were using drugs for non-medical purposes. And most people have tried through their family and friends. That's how they got exposed to opioids. And how it interacts with your brain, for example, fentanyl, it's a very fast chemical. The faster the action, more affection, the interaction with the brain, the stronger the chance that you are going to like it and going to be dependent on it. Now, what are the health impacts once anybody who developed a substance use disorder at individual level? If they are taking even prescribed opioids or illicit fentanyl or street drugs, high chance for overdose, because we know the counterfeit tablets, even two grains are enough of the street fentanyl to cause an overdose. So, and if people are lucky, if they have readily available Naloxone, or they have called nine-one-one, we could save their life. But if not, overdose can lead to death. If they have taken any opioids, they are impaired and driving, that would lead to a motor vehicle accident. Then, as people are depending, they are choosing later to get a speedy action, a quick action needle, so they are turning to the needle use. And with needle, we know, come so many blood-borne infections. First of all, they are developing skin infection, they can get cellulitis, they can get hepatitis C or HIV. So those are the risk factors attached to the needle use. Once somebody is dependent and brain is occupied all the time with these cravings and how to get the next fix, how somebody is going to perform a job, or even work as, you know, work as a father or a good family member? So they lose their social productivity, they are without job. And this leads to criminal activities, because now they are feeding their habit, it's a compulsive disorder, compulsive use, and that leads to the criminal activities and their interaction with law and order. And of course, homelessness and poverty is the ultimate end for the individual. At the family level, we have seen in practical life as well, me, Dr. Verani, working Edmonton, Cartson, like how this opioid has affected a family. We are seeing the disruptions, we are seeing separation, divorces, loss of children custody. These patients are attending their dosings and running to the court, so lot of CFS involvement. And in all of these, children are being neglected. So that really impacts their upbringing, which should be the golden period for a child, you know? And then at a community level, because of this, now the dealers, they know, doctors are not prescribing, now there's a wise prescription use, at least from the provider perspective. And all those people who for one reason or other reason got on opioids, they have no way but to turn to the street drugs, and that has fed the organized crimes. So because it's a demand and supply rule, right? So more and more crimes are increasing because of this opioid epidemic. And because of that, we now see more policing, more people are being incarcerated, that leads to cost for all this incarceration and law enforcement policies. Then we are seeing, because these people are not seeking treatment, and they even, most of the time, don't know that they got this blood-borne infection, have C and HIV. They are lucky if they get diagnosed and treated earlier. Otherwise, we get them and diagnose them at advanced stage, and that would cost the healthcare more. If we were lucky, if we could have diagnosed earlier, we could have prevented all those expensive complications. So that's an additional burden to the society for this increased healthcare cost. And overall, lot of psychological trauma, losing the loved ones, family members, right? Because it's not a moral failure, it's a chronic brain disease, it's a compulsive use disorder. They are not doing it out of happiness, once they are dependent, and they are experiencing this severe withdrawal, they have no choice but to even manage their withdrawal, some people are continuing to use. So seeing your loved ones whether living or experiencing with the overdose and that, that has left people with lot of trauma. So where this has led to, we, now Canada has seen more than eight thousand opioid deaths since two thousand and sixteen. We are facing a biggest public health epidemic, which is an epidemic within an epidemic, because it keeps rising, it's not going down. We are still, I'm going to show you the number, just to provide you more education on this as how serious this situation is. So the National Report came out last year, and they have provided the update by public health agency Canada, more than eight thousand deaths, as I mentioned, from January two thousand and sixteen to March. And they have observed that these deaths, like seventy-three percent were related to fentanyl or fentanyl-related analogs. These were mostly in males, seventy-seven percent, and the age range were between thirty Just to look, as I mentioned, the seriousness of this epidemic, that since from January to March two thousand and eighteen, we have seen already one thousand thirty-six deaths, more in the Western Canada, B.C., three ninety, Alberta, two oh three, and Ontario is also now increasing the number, we are seeing increase in number, three hundred twenty. So more than eleven Canadians are dying every day because of these opioids, overdose-related The Kihi Canadian Information Health Centre, they have also presented their statistics, and they have shown, average number of opioid poisoning which are resulting in hospitalization every day are sixteen. So sixteen, then we have seen fifty-three percent increase in the rate of hospitalization over the last ten years in Canada. And interestingly enough, ten times more in Alberta as compared to Ontario. I'm just going to show you now some statistics for Alberta. In Alberta, so the South Zone is the blue bar. As you are seeing since two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, it's, we are seeing increased number of ER presentation, ER visits in the South Zone, especially worsening from the last quarter of two thousand and seventeen, and look now, compare it with Calgary, Isbing. So South Zone is really picking up, situation is worsening in South Zone. This is another overview of the situation by municipality, and again, after Red Ear, you are seeing Lethbridge has picked up, the rate is thirty-four per hundred thousand. If you just look by zone-wise number and rate of fentanyl-related drug poisoning, again, after Calgary, it's the South Zone. So municipality of South Zone really, sorry, municipality of Lethbridge and overall South Zone, numbers are rising. Now, what was public health response to opioid crisis? So basically, the interventions were done for prevention, there were some harm reduction initiatives, treatment, and enhanced surveillance and analysis. Let's talk first about preventive measures, what measures were taken. There were more public health awareness campaign regarding the serious side effects of opioids, also about Naloxone. Then there were colleges, like College of Physicians and Surgeons in Alberta, and other organizations were engaged, Alberta Health Service, to ensure there is appropriate prescription of opioids, doctor prescribed wisely, appropriately, and patients are weaned off, even for acute condition, if they are prescribing, it should be for short duration, and they should be weaned off, or at least they should be warned if patient prefers to use other order native medication for pain. And in the prevention also, to manage the pain better, so there should be other non-opioid interventions, like acupuncture, or, you know, other therapies before patients should try physiotherapy or other, to manage their chronic pains. Then harm reduction initiatives were taken. Naloxone kits were made available, which were free of Nalaxone kits were made available, which were free of cost, through the pharmacy, through doctors, through ER, so it's readily available to reverse the opioid overdose. Then we also came up with establishment of supervised consumption sites, that was another harm reduction measure. And thirdly, sharing timely lab drug analysis, like we are getting counterfeited benzos or other drugs on the street, if they were laced with or contaminated with fentanyl. So there was a collaboration that law enforcement agencies were alerting health partners, so that information could be shared with the public as well. Then, the most important intervention was treatment. Access to evidence-based treatment, so both Savoxane and Methadone, which is, both are equally safe, effective treatment options, and it definitely reduces the mortality or the deaths, people who are using drugs. So I'm just going to show you quickly this graph. This was a study published in British Medical Journal, which compared the rate of all-cause mortality, mortality means death, patient who were not on treatment or patient who were in treatment, as you see the black solid line, it shows patient who were in treatment, there was, especially if they were on methadone, there was risk of overdose-related death in the first four weeks, but after that, once they were stable, the rate of the all-cause mortality declined. So people who are in treatment, they were compared with people out of treatment, and they found that the treatment significantly reduced the death rate. So that proves that this is an effective measure to reduce these opioid-related deaths, to retain people in treatment. So retention in the treatment is the way to go forward. This is the same graph again presenting that finding. I'm just showing you this figure, which shows that, it shows the proportion of apparent accidental deaths related to fentanyl and other opioids by medical history within 30 days before death. If you see that people had interaction with these medical avenues, whether it was ER, whether it was community center, they, like 56% people who were using opioids, they accessed at least one of the services 30 days before their death. And people who were on fentanyl, 74% accessed at least one of the services listed in this. So that shows window of opportunity, that if those people who interacted with the ER, with the pharmacy, with the community center, even with an ambulance, any health services, whether outreach, if they were appropriately referred and were offered treatment and were retained, they could have been alive. It could have made a significant impact. So we have that window of opportunity to make sure people are referred appropriately, they get into the treatment, and they are retained into the treatment. So here are some interventions with least impact, which is stigma or shaming, just stigmatizing the person, hey, you are bad, you are using drug, you are junkie, you are addicted. We don't want to use those words, they are not addictive, they are person with substance use disorder. So shaming and stigmatizing would get no, you know, no help at all. And then prescription monitoring alone is not gonna work. Also making tampering-resistant formulations, that has also failed, like, and detox and abstinence therapy. People think, yeah, okay, somebody is addicted, let's send him to the detox, and let's just keep them for 10 days or 30 days, and they would be okay. It doesn't work, because this is a chronic medic, brain condition, and the moment they come out, we see increased number of overdoses once they come out of the detox, because they were in detox, they didn't have access to the treatment, and they're, and not even access to illicit drugs, so their opioid tolerance has gone down. Once they come out, the first thing what they do, whether it's from detox, or even person coming out of prison, they die, that's the high-risk period for the overdose-related deaths. So that's why abstinence-based therapies have failed. And the only thing works is either Savoxane or Methadone, those are first-line and safe and effective treatment. Okay, so what are the future directions to improve treatment access? At this point, Alberta Health Services have tried to expand the access, however, there are some practical challenges. So we want to make sure meet the people where they are, as I have shown you, like people have interacted before they have died, at many avenues with the health centers or health services, but they didn't have the treatment. So, and not everybody could travel all the way to Lethbridge or all the way to Carston, because these treatments are not easily accessible. So we want equitable access to these treatment, so that anybody who's interested and willing to come on treatment, they should have readily available treatment. And that would be, I think, moving way forward, mobile clinics. So if patients are unable to come to stationary site, probably it's us going to them and offer these treatment, and try to retain them, because some of the myth going around that, once you are on Savoxane treatment, just stay on it for two, three weeks, and then you are healed and weaned off, which is the wrong concept. It doesn't work that way. So they, I mean, the treatment weighs from person to person, somebody has to stay on the treatment indefinitely. But people, the longer they stay in the treatment, along with other non-pharmacological interventions, which is counseling, the longer they stay in treatment, the better chances they have not to relapse. So they should stay in treatment, as I showed you the meta-analysis from British Medical Journal, based on many cohort studies, and that's the best evidence we have, that the treatment, retention in the treatment significantly impacts, because they are able to work, you know, they, how, not only they are alive, but they are socially productive. If somebody's goal is to take care of the family, they are able to function in that role. Somebody has to work, and they are working, that's their goal, right? So socially, in any capacity, if they are functional and they are productive, we have achieved our, you know, our goal. And if, for someone, like if they want to be in a stable relationship, that's their outcome, yeah. If they are able to do that while on the treatment, this is the best as a society, what we want, right? And less criminal activities, more, you know, healthier society. Then if, another future direction would be a stronger role played by the pharmacist, because after the health services, after the hospital or the clinic setting, the next interaction with the pharmacist. So if they are, they are able to identify that somebody having problem, and, or even they suspect little bit, probably if they could appropriately refer them to the nearest treatment center, that would be best, so people are connected, they don't have to navigate, they don't have to navigate by themselves, looking out for the treatment. So pharmacists can definitely play a role in referral, as well as providing education to the patients who are just on Savoxane, and now they are planning to come off, that they are healed forever, and it's good, stay on Savoxane for two weeks and be off. So they can provide education, that they should retain in the program, till they are really stable, till they are really stable, and then again, we can reassess the situation, when they should be weaned off slowly. And then last point, fundamental change in our perception as a society. So we have to take a humanistic aspect, we have to look at them in a compassionate way, like even for doctors, nurses, paramedics, law enforcement agencies, all of us, we have to treat them as human beings, and try to provide them compassionate services, in every capacity wherever we are. Thank you so much, now we are open for the questions. Do you have at least a question that was sent to you, project?
Would you, yeah, not on us, but I know that there was, you know, there was a large number of questions that had to do with coming to town to get Savoxane, how long does that have to occur, does it always have to occur in town, can some of this treatment be provided in a home community? So the vast majority of patients in the Carston clinic are from surrounding First Nations, most from Stand Up. So one of the challenges is the pharmacy capacity in Stand Up to provide treatment to the number of people on treatment, and so from time to time, there are caps set at the Stand Up pharmacy, in terms of how many patients can they accommodate, that's a challenge. One of the ways around that challenge, as Dr. Friedy talked about, was the access to a mobile clinic, that's staffed by health professionals who can administer medication closer to where the parent, where the patient lives. And it was sort of a Freudian slip that I said parent, because many of them are parents. And to be transported by the medical transportation services into town for the beginning, every day, where you're not allowed to bring your kid into the medical transportation van, is really, it's a tension for parents, because they're, one of the reasons they're seeking out treatment is so that they can start parenting again, and be focused on their small children. And so if we can get therapy to them, instead of forcing them to take an hour and a half at some point out of their day, just to get pretty simply administered medication, it's not good for anybody. And certainly the pharmacies here in town have other patients that they want to provide service to, and they hit a capacity load as well. So that's one of the things that I know Alberta Health Services is working with the community to maximize. And I know that one of Jeff's sequence of questions had to do with that particular issue. But one thing I will say is that, you know, and we noticed this in the city where we provide service to multiple times the number of patients that we provide service to in Carston. And that is that in those pharmacy environments that are really calm, and where the pharmacist has good relationships with the patient, is dialed into their goals and treatment, kind of knows what's going on in their life, those patients are a pleasure, really a pleasure to deal with, and they come in almost as a, one of the most enjoyable parts today, to come in, receive treatment, have a short conversation with the pharmacist, they know how things are going. And if we can work towards that kind of aesthetic in Carston, I think we would find that some of the problems that I know people have identified, will start to peter out. And that was one of the, one of the sort of the themes of Jeff's questions as well.
I saw a question over here. I appreciate the last comment on there, the perception. The perception is in this area that it's all north. It isn't, it's right here in this community also. But the thing that I'm gonna ask is this, how are you gonna overcome the Charter of Human Rights in your detox centers? Because as an adult, you don't have to stay there. Is that right? You can walk out of the detox center at any given time.
So as an adult, so you're right, that there are very specific criteria for involuntarily putting somebody in a health facility, usually it's a hospital, and usually it has to do with acute psychiatric illness, where the person is at an acute, like immediate threat to themselves or other people. And those criteria are very, very rarely met in somebody with a substance use condition. So a couple of things, one is with respect to this being a problem of north. As you saw, South Zone is actually, in many ways, the worst situation in Alberta, not the best situation in Alberta. That has to do with a number of factors, but when Fensnall became a thing, when we started to see it in the news, it was actually in Southern Alberta. And you hear and you see pictures about the downtown east side in Vancouver, in fact, we started to see toxic opioid drugs in South Zone around the same time, or slightly before, we saw it in East Hastings in Vancouver. The best that we can tell, in Alberta, where we started to see these toxic opioids turn up, was by no coincidence in the same place where we saw the highest levels of opioid prescribing in the five and 10 years previous. So across Canada, Alberta was typically the worst in the early 2000s, and South Zone was typically the worst in Alberta. So it's not a coincidence that we start to see a real hotspot of illicit drug activity here. So that's the first part of your question, you're very right to point out that South Zone is not an anomaly in the way that we want it to be an anomaly. The second part though, about involuntarily having people attending treatment, for the opioid problem, actually that's not what we want to do anyway. As Dr. Friedy pointed out, the longer the length of time in an abstinence-based detox facility, actually the higher the risk of death afterwards. And there's very good studies that show that the risk of death from anything after detox, not just overdose, but anything after detox, is higher than if we had done nothing with the person at all. So we've done more harm than good with abstinence-based therapies with this condition of opioid use disorder. It's different in patients with problems with methamphetamine, cocaine, and several alcohol, and several other substance use conditions. But with this one, when we remove patients from opioid use, and we have, you know, we engage them in 12-step, for example, and they talk about their traumatic history with their parents, et cetera, if we don't couple that intervention with what Dr. Friedy was calling agonist-based therapy with medications, the risk of overdose death afterwards is super high, almost as high as if they had gone to jail without treatment and come out.
So in that case, is that a possibility for the future, in those detox centers, to start to apply the proper way to treat those people, which is through Savoxane and through...
So it's a possibility in the present, and it's being done in some places, and there's really a call by experts to say, listen, we're funding with tax dollars many of these programs that are not offering evidence-based treatment and doing more harm than good, we must stop doing that. And so there are examples of where they're accepting of evidence-based therapies, and there are detox facilities provided by Alberta Health Services where people with multiple drug problems, or even just opioid drug problems, are put into that abstinence-based environment, but started on evidence-based therapy while there. And then continuity from there to a community provider, that's what we want to see. And generally speaking, when the environment is right, we don't have to, we don't have to think about involuntary involvement with those programs. Basically, here's what we hear from patients, and we're talking about tens of thousands of patients over our experience. When they feel human, and when they're spoken to by people who understand what they're actually going through, and are treated without judgment, they stay. And it's tough to prove that with scientific literature, but our experience is, when we see a patient smile at us, we know we've got him, right? We've got him in a healthcare relationship, and it feels like, they, it almost feels like they've walked us along a path to understand what they've gone through, and when our light goes on, they decide to stay. So if we can get to that place with residential treatment and detox facilities, I think we'll have more success. One of our problems is that, including in this, in this area, but in many parts of Canada, there, we tend to think of every substance use condition as the same, and in many ways they are, right? Addiction is addiction, but we don't treat them all the same way. And so, you know, if somebody traditionally resorts to a 12-step program for saying alcohol use conditions, they may, if they have an opioid use condition, be told by that fellowship, that you shouldn't be on anything in order for you to recover. And that becomes a challenge. And that becomes challenging. And in those residential treatment facilities, they sometimes have artificial caps, non-medical, but how much of this medication you can be on for you to be allowed to participate. And that's much more ideological than it is medical. And there's two harms of that. One is it's medically unwise, but two is when we impose those things on people who are seeking out recovery, it removes from them the, that sense that I'm not judged because you literally are for the number of milligrams that you're on of a medication by somebody who does, who hadn't understand the medicine because they're not a medical practitioner. So, so yeah, I think that if we get better at being nice, I might get a lot for you.
Help me to understand the philosophy behind safe injection sites. And the reason I'm asking the question, I see a lot of it in left bridge, a lot of people are very concerned, you know, because there's needles all over the place. To me, that's not safe. Okay? So what I'm, help me understand, when they go to those safe injection sites, are they allowed to do their own injecting or is that assisted by medical professionals that are there at those safe sites? Because if I see what I'm seeing, and I read it all the time in the Herald, Left Bridge Herald, and I see pictures on the news all the time, people that are out collecting along the railroad tracks, all these needles and people are walking in the golf park and finding needles, they're seeing people sitting by the park that have gotten their, their medication from the safe injection site, walked off site, and then they start taking it in the public, in view, public view. So I'm trying to understand that philosophy of the safe injection site with allowing them to leave there before they've taken it and allow them to deposit their needles wherever, willy-nilly.
Right.
Help me understand that.
Okay.
And what there is being done to avoid that problem.
Yeah.
And that public perception that's over there.
Yeah. So it's very much a public perception issue because of the data that's available to us as public. Right? So when you study supervised injection sites or supervised drug consumption spaces, you come up with a different picture than when you read about it in popular press. Okay? So a couple of things. One is when you go to a supervised injection site, you actually bring your own drugs, which is, you know, in a word, stupid. It, it would be ideal if we had a policy infrastructure or a policy environment in Canada where if you went to one of these sites, you got a clean predictable supply of drugs. And we don't. Because drugs remain criminalized and non-regulated, a person can't go to a supervised injection site and get morphine or pharmaceutical-grade heroin, they get to take what they bought from the DR. Okay? That, that's a problem. The second thing is that when you go to a supervised injection site, you don't pick up drugs and leave. You can't because there's no drugs to pick up, number one. And number two, the purpose of it is that you can be there after you administer the drug. And you can use clean needles that are provided to you in the site. And unfortunately, again, because of the policy environment, we are not allowed to as health professionals administer that drug to the patient or as we would like to. And in some overdose prevention sites that are, have been non-regulated, the ones that are pop-up sites you've seen in Vancouver, Toronto, Ottawa, where it's volunteer health professionals and peers who operate these sites, they actually will from time to time, under the guise of darkness, administer to the individuals having trouble, partially to make sure that they can do it in as sterile a way possible and also because the supervision afterwards is the key intervention. But you can, you, while you may hear stories about people being high after using a supervised injection site and walking around nodding off afterwards, it doesn't actually happen. They're, they're observed afterwards until that high-risk window is passed and then they leave. What people are seeing is that people who don't go to the site, but tend to reside in the area and use drugs in the area, have used and are intoxicated while outside. And people assume that since they're in the area, they have used the supervised injection site. That doesn't actually happen. Now, the last thing I'm going to say is about the needle stream about, which is a public health concern. We're both public health doctors. So that again, we're going to notice those things as a public once some major change happens. So the major change is you put one of these facilities in and now we start to notice all of these needles. And the dots that we connect in a straight line are supervised injection site open, now we see needles. In fact, we always saw needles. We just didn't see the needles because they weren't reported on. So when you actually study this scientifically, best examples are in Vancouver. And you assessed the commonness of finding needles in parks and alleyways and such prior to the arrival of supervised injection site and post, there's actually a decrease. But the public perception, and you could study this as well, is that it's gone up. So I think we still have to watch those things. Like we still have to make sure that it's going in the right direction. We still have to make sure that, you know, the quick propole for somebody who uses substances is we're going to do a better job of caring about you as a, as a community. And the expectation is start caring about us back. Right? We're in this together, we're a community together, we care about you and we're providing this space to make sure that nothing bad happens to you. And so the, the return is now let's, you be a part, you're a part of this community. So let's make sure that needles aren't, aren't presenting risks to kids walking around in parks and such.
One last point on that. So after they have used, the needles are discarded safely in the site. They are not going out with the needles.
Yeah. That's where they should be, inside, it should be safely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, there's a queue back there.
Yeah. Hi. Sorry, I have two questions. The first one is if someone's in long-term methadone treatment, is it free?
Is it free? Depends how you define free. So the medication for, for somebody who's got, who's on public medication insurance. So for a First Nation person who's got treaty status and has access to non-treature health benefits, the medication is free. For somebody who's on income support and through Alberta Blue Cross for that, the medication is free. For somebody who's on assistance for the severely handicapped age, the medication is free. For somebody who is on an employer benefit plan, the medication is however free that plan allows, right? So if it's 80% covers, they pay for 20%. But if they're not on any of those plans, so for example, somebody's working and on methadone who doesn't have employer benefits pays for their methadone. They don't pay for the doctor because physician care is free in this province or across the country. And they don't, and it's not free for them to take the time out of their day or away from work to go and get the medication. But on balance, financial well-being improves dramatically when somebody is on, on methadone therapy if it's medically indicated. And what they contribute in terms of tax after being in recovery far outweighs how much, if we are paying for their methadone, how much it costs. The drug itself is penny.
Well, I know, and that's my point is that I believe it should be free. Because I disagree with what you just said, that after a bit of therapy, that they're, they're more in tune because their, their life has usually gone to a point where everything's gone. They've lost their, their spouse, they've lost their children, their families, their, their parents. Everyone is traumatized by this. And they've dug themselves in such a hole that they have nothing. They have, and they're in debt. They've lost their driver's licenses, everything. So now they're working, they're, they're making some cash. Yet they are getting a little better, but they're still stuck. And there doesn't seem to be that bridge. So how do you get someone who's in such a deep hole? Yeah, you get them working a little bit, you get them on methadone, but how do they clean up their life? How do they pay off their debts? How do they, how do they get it back together?
You'd be amazed. I'd love it if it was allowed under the Health Information Act for everybody to come and hang out and see the various stages of recovery that we see our patients. And remember, we're talking about a sample size of tens of thousands. I've got patients who make more money than I do and I do okay as investment bankers, professional athletes, teachers, healthcare professionals, some who are allowed to continue to practice, some who are not, who are on methadone or pure morphine Suboxone long-term. And this is difficult to prove in the evidence, but my sense clinically is that the ones who A, seek out treatment early because it's available or they know about it or it wasn't stigmatized do well. So the ones who aren't at, you know, the typical rock bottom and recognize quickly, oh shoot, this is out of my control. And they go quickly on, do a Google search for what should I do and find the right place. They do okay. Then the others, of course, the, the risk determinants that Dr. Fried talked about, like so if we can, if some of those are not present, like if there's not mental illness, if there is a, a family infrastructure, if they're not from socially disadvantaged groups, they tend to do okay. But then the final more soft one is that if the patient feels hopeful for some reason, either because they know somebody who's done well or they've been involved even in 12-step group where they see the potential for people to, to do well and recognize it as a possibility, do nicely. And I'd say that the percentage in, in my practice, you tell me if this is different from yours, 25 to 40% do as well as I would want for a family member of mine, my own. And that's, that shocks luck.
Well, that's a pretty low percentage. And.
I would say, but so if you think of how people generate view in society without addiction, how many people, like would you say that 25 to 40% of people in the population have...
I know that, but you still haven't answered my question. And my question was whether for the people that are at the bottom of the barrel, what do we do for it? Because from what I see in this community, we see a lot of bottom of the barrels where they're not teachers, they're not professionals, they're not bank. How are we going to get those people? Because they need, they don't need a month of support, they don't need two months of support, they need years of support. And they need to get it accessible and be equipped.
Yeah. No, I'm afraid I don't have a good answer to that question as over my pay grade as a doctor and a public health doctor. I think that's a community question. Right? Like how do we rally around folks who are having trouble, period? Whether it has to do with substances or whether it has to do with historical trauma or whether it has to do with how you parented. We've got to find ways of supporting those individuals and that's really not an addiction, not exclusively an addiction issue.
No, there's essentially mental issues involved. But was the mental issue that created the addiction? Because the mental issue wasn't helpful.
Yeah. We see the same thing with people with mental illness and no substance use problems. Right? Is that how do we, how do we provide the upside that we think that they can achieve? And as, you know, for better for worse, it's not a medical question anymore.
This is a comment. As a counselor, I see your, your program here and it all goes back to the education process. Now, children, when they're educated, they're in a warm, loving, kind, friendly environment, classroom. As a community, do we need to advance some kind of an education process where we have a community hall or a community room? And in that education process, we have these different components such as finances, such as employment and so forth, that we work with these people, encourage them to come there and then have counselors on board in that education program where you can offer the, the employment or the steps to increased health and so forth. Is that we don't need to have another safe injection site. I, I think that that's a failure when, when Counselor Barnes talked about that. It's a, it's a total failure as far as I'm concerned. But we need to have an education process, a program, I think, involved in the community where we can get with our neighbors and our friends and say, hey, you know, we recognize both of us together, that we, one of us has a problem. I'll go with you. Let's go to this, this program tonight. That's what AA is all about, is that education process. Now, would you come on board with, with a community such as ours if we offered an education program?
Yeah, I mean, so I think you described a few things that actually bear out nicely in the literature. Okay? So one of them has to do with stuff that doesn't relate to substance use at all. So a good example of this is Iceland, which doesn't really compare nicely with Canada because it's kind of monolithic when it comes to the makeup of, of the population. But what they've demonstrated is that when you provide structured extracurricular activities for young people, usually sport, then you see a decrease in tobacco use, early alcohol initiation, cannabis use and troubles with the law. We also find that there's life skill programs in Italy, the United States, and also in Iceland that demonstrate a few key learnings in, at young age that also have those outcomes. One of them is resistance to marketing, so advertising resistance for some reason that strongly correlated with a decrease in substance use. Another one was involvement in intergenerational structured programming. So things that kids did with parents or grandparents, recreational things in after-school times. And, and one other life skill training thing, assertiveness. So the skill that they mapped closely to rejection of substance use at early ages was if somebody has taken something from you, how skillful are you, are you at retrieving it? That has nothing to do with substances, but it has to do with life skills. Possibly in more nurturing environments, which we heard the mayor say, we hope is what, what our schools provide, and I have some doubt that all of our schools' environments provide that. But would we come on board with programs like that? Yeah, absolutely. That's where the money is. You know, and I don't mean that's where we would make money. That's where you get the big bang for your buck, is where you invest in those things upstream. Yes, you see benefits in substance use outcomes, but in virtually every single health outcome and social outcome you can come up with. That said, as far as supervised drug consumption services go, there is no question about the data. There is absolutely no question about the data that between harm reduction programs like the Loxone distribution and supervised drug consumption spaces, mortality risk decreases substantially and so does, so do problems of social disorder. There's no question about that. And the best evidence actually comes from Canada. But we also see good evidence from Scandinavian countries as well. So, I mean, I think it's a balance of both. We would love to be in a place where we never, where we can hit a point in our trajectory where supervised consumption is no longer required. Right? Where everybody starts from an equitable base in childhood and adolescence, where the concept of substance use by injection doesn't even occur to people. They don't have supervised injection in Iceland. They don't need it.
Suzanne, to carry on with that idea of the importance of education, do you do presentation to school boards on that presentation you just made?
Just, we haven't done for school boards.
Isn't that some, some place where...
Maybe even in Newton.
Yeah. And we, we do it in popular media as well, so that I guess to, it's a discussion that can happen.
But wouldn't it be good to come in a South Zone and do some education at that level so that there is more education from the bottom up?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's wise. It's a great idea, Mayor. I also think that we've got our work cut out for us in educating health professionals.
Well, I think it's a very wide mandate you have, but if education is part of the solution, let's start where those who are vulnerable are educated.
Yeah. No, and I think that there's a distinction, I think, between those of us who are tasked with the care of people in our mandate, so, you know, education boards, first responders, healthcare professionals, town councils, all people who should know what's what. Where we have to be deliberate and careful is in school age and education of our substances.
No, I agree.
Because we've, we've done a really bad job of that. One program that's been very popular is the DARE program.
Yeah, I remember that.
Humongous failure and very correlated with increases in recreational experimental drug use. And there's a number of kind of logical reasons why that might have occurred. The other thing, you should have seen actually that the education campaigns around cannabis before October the 17th were just horrible and have probably reduced the credibility of public health authorities to a place where it's unrecoverable. Basically because we've got 30% of Canadian youth who have used and on a daily or weekly basis use cannabis. And we went out... And we went out there and told them that cannabis can kill you because it's got fentanyl in it, and it doesn't. And they know that, right? So one of, one of a few things that happened is the ones who actually believe you will say, well, hey, that guy smokes weed, and if weed's got fentanyl in it, I could use fentanyl, and everything would be okay because he's okay. And that conclusion actually is come to by adults. Second thing that can happen is when we use scare tactics to educate kids about drugs, it increases the glamour factor, right? It's the same reason why kids, so if you, kids, when you watch kids gamble, if you've ever watched a kid bet on blackjack, they love high stakes. Because the way that the, that the pre-executive functioning mind works is they focus on the possibility of positives and don't even consider the possibility of negatives. So if you increase the stakes, they would love to see, well, if I've got a million to one chance of making a million bucks off of my $1 bet, I'm taking that chance every time, even if I have a 99.9% chance of losing my buck. They're gonna do it, whereas you and I will think, I hope, will think differently. So when we use these scare tactics, kids actually think, this is glamorous, right? And we also increase the perception of young people that these issues are common. And so 30% of people using cannabis also means that 70% of adolescents don't. But when it's all that they see around them is advertisements about weed, the perception is, everybody's using it. And most kids have a fear of missing out. So if they think all their peers are using cannabis, well, now they will. So we have to be very deliberate and thoughtful about how we do education for young people. But you're absolutely right, we need everybody on the same, everybody with influence needs to be on the same page as far as the cannabis goes on this problem.
You partially answered my question already, but I'm just wondering what is being done? I understand this crisis exploding, what is being done in the short term to try and decrease the access to people that are not addicted so they don't get addicted? Is there anything being done to limit? I know it's a difficult question, but it seems to me that if we can keep them from getting started to begin with, we're gonna save a lot of headache and a whole pile of money.
Yeah, this is a really delicate balance. We just came from a conversation with the RCP about, you know, controlling the diversion and trafficking of prescription opioids. Because in the past, that's where a lot of people got their start with opioids. Then the trajectory generally was physician recognizes that it's a problem and says, I'm pulling the plug. And then they're left with a problem with opioids and no access to a predictable and safer supply. And that's what we saw writ large in the population, was we were getting this slow increase in opioid-related harms, hospitalizations, deaths. We started to take measures to change that supply. So they changed the oxycontin to a more tamper deterrent or abuse deterrent formulation. And physicians started to decrease how much they prescribed. What we saw was tremendous increase in harms. Because we left space for the market to get more toxic. So I guess what I'm saying is, we have to be really, really deliberate about how we try and supply control. Because you're right, we don't want, as you know, as Dr. Free said, availability of the drug has something to do with how many people will become addicted to it. But at the same time, we're in a position where if we reduce the availability of the drug and do more, put more effort into interdiction of things like fentanyl, the market actually becomes more toxic.
Well, I guess my question is, a lot of these people are getting on fentanyl, they didn't get it from the doctor to begin with.
Yes.
But now they're on it.
Yes.
How do we prevent that from happening in the first place?
Yeah, so there's an inertia that comes with certain, with the popular substance. So we see a lot of, and this speaks to your point, we see a lot of young people who present to us with opioid addiction, having never smoked weed before or drank alcohol. That's just weird. But it's because of how available fentanyl is, and possibly also because of how we've messaged it. Because all you heard about for about six months in popular press was fentanyl, fentanyl, fentanyl. Everybody knew what that picture green pills was, that was fentanyl. And we called it things like the king of all opioids, and we increased the glamour factor related to it. I think the best way for us to reduce that inertia is to treat the people who currently have the problem. That's where the, that's what the supply is following, is not folks who will experiment with fentanyl, but people who need five and six hits a day in order to sustain their addiction. And we need to remove them out of the demand side of the market by providing treatment. In the meantime, the things that we have to do are the long-term stuff. Is really, is really strengthening the young folks from substance use, period. And from, you know, what one might call social ills, period, is to give them something to do. There's a saying in the public health community that if you don't want kids to do drugs, give them something else to do. And so, yeah, recreational activity is huge. Like I said, intergenerational activities, recreational activities, like even bingos that are mother and daughter bingos, or, you know, the father-daughter dances and that sort of stuff. Those little soft fluffy things that we think, you know, don't really mean much, they're probably more meaningful than we give them credit for. Yeah, I think one benefit that we have in a, it's a positive and a negative. We're in a winter climate, we love hockey, so that's something that people can do. And the trouble is, is if we don't keep people busy during the winter months, we get up to all sorts of no good. We see that in how we eat during the winter. We see that in how our physical activity increases during the winter. And especially in certain demographics, we see how that, how things change with substance use. It's not that I do.
So I work at the hospital in Carson here, and I'm a healthcare professional. You know, I see that there's lots of treatments available, and one of the things I see is the prevention that gets people from coming in for treatment, what prevents people from getting treatment is a lot of times shame. They know that if they walk through the doors and head to that clinic, that they will be outed for their problems. So as a community, kind of what I gleaned from your presentation here, which was fantastic, thank you by the way, is the best thing that we can do for our community members is have compassion and love them and support them and not judge them in order to know, for them to know that they have a safe community to get the support that they need. Would you say that that, because I think a lot of people feel helpless to know, what can I do? So maybe we can support them in any way that we can, make sure that they, they feel accepted in our town, they're getting fed, they're getting somewhere safe to sleep. And even though they may maybe make bad choices occasionally, we all make bad choices occasionally, there's just happens of drugs. Would you say that that would be something that we could spread as a message?
Yes, I think definitely this is a high time to change the social norms around it. The more education and more awareness we have, and we spread the word, it's okay if you have this problem, there is treatment available. And people are connecting with compassion. So I think all of us as a society, as a community, have come together, the enforcement agencies, like they have to take a compassionate view as well, the ER doctors, ambulance, like whoever, or even in the community centers, whenever we are having any educational seminars. I think those are the avenues where people will be getting the messages or connecting them to the treatment in a way that don't feel stigmatized. So I think, yes, it's the overall changing of the social norms. We have to make it normal, like any other disease, this is a medical condition. It's not something out of the ordinary, right?
I heard a good analogy, actually today I listened to Dr. Anna Frio, and she said, if someone has diabetes, a lot of times it's because they've made bad food choices throughout their lives. And when they come in with a high blood sugar, we don't say, you blew it, we gave you a chance, you blew it, that's it, right? This is a dis-
No more insulin for you.
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, I think we need to start thinking about it like that, that this is an illness, just like every other chronic illness that we deal with. And people deserve to be treated with compassion, just like we treat all those others.
Yeah, and because you're a health professional, I just want to address that tiny bit. So most of us have at some point during our career called addiction, chronic, relapsing, remaining condition. And drawing comparisons to most other chronic diseases, and it fits in most ways. But it doesn't fit in some important ways. And so we should be just conscious of that. And also be conscious of the fact that many people who are dying in this epidemic actually don't have addiction. Okay, so there's some people who recreationally or socially or occasionally use substances, who are actually, per risk episode, at greater risk of dying from substance use because of no tolerance. And that has to do with a whole bunch of drug policy things, that's a whole other talk. But one thing that I would say is, we should keep in mind why it is that people use substances, and we do ourselves. Most of us do, most of us have a coffee in the morning. Many people around, coming over the time of year, people drink a lot. And we've decided that we're okay with that. But we've decided that, well, certain drugs were not. Now we're okay with cannabis, it's moral now, but before October the 17th, it made you a horrible person if you smoked weed. So those are all really like artificial arbitrary lines that we've drawn, depending on who uses what substance. But essentially, people use substances because they want to feel better from something very quickly. They want to take a shortcut. And if we make the environment make them feel worse, the likelihood of them using substances to feel better goes up. So if you're sure to somebody who uses substances, you can be assured that they will use them more. So we should be providing environments where they feel better. I actually learned this from Dr. Free, it was very present to Diana, when I saw, when we came to Carson the first time, the patients that she saw by video, she was, she saw in person and was hugging us. And I was taught not to do that, but now I hug all my patients. And they're like, wait, you're touching me. Yeah, if you're okay with that, we will touch in a platonic way. Because, you know, when you have pediatric patients, pat them on the back, give them a hug, or rustle their hair. And your elderly patients, you know, when she's had her hip fracture, you put your arm around her and you help her walk. But somehow, our patients who use substances, or our homeless patients, we won't touch them. Or we won't look them in the eye. And that doesn't make life better. That doesn't, that makes them more likely to look for a quick way to feel better about themselves and about their environment. So you're very right. The compassionate environments is not just because it's the right thing to do, it's actually helpful. And it's tough to prove it in population-based research, but clinically I can tell you it's true. And also neurochemically, when you reduce stress levels, all sorts of negative impulses decline. But we can show that in PET scans, that the areas of the brain that are activated when you make somebody stressed are those areas of the brain that are associated with craving substances, period. So, and it relates to how people present clinically. It makes sense that fight with the wife, cravings for heroin. Fired from job, cravings for heroin. You know, Christmas stress, more. Like that's how it works. So, yeah, you're absolutely right, that's what everybody should, if there's one thing that health professionals and others need to know, it's that if you're not a jerk, things get better.
We can make like bumper stickers.
Yeah. Make America Great Again, don't be a jerk.
Hi, my name is Sean Fox, and I've been a lot of you, the public employer. And that was a message this year's summer that we tried to carry. And I was one of the spokespeople at Peace Camp, and that was the message. It was to build a healthy relationship with the Southstone. And in order to build a healthy relationship, we need to engage in healthy, meaningful conversation. We need to have meaningful consultation. That means, and we all know, that a high percentage of opioid users, the polysubstance abuse, is, comes from the First Nations community. Let's just get it out there and say that. And we can look at it because it's very complex and say, intergenerational trauma, poverty. There's many, many reasons, and it's a very complex situation. And Suzanne, I see Suzanne here, and Harold, they've been championed with our people and champion that harm reduction movement. So my understanding is that doctors here, in this town, in the town, I believe, with maybe one or two, they prescribed opioids to begin, like you said, five to 10 years ago. But now refuse to prescribe Suboxone, which is a harm reduction drug, and methadone. So there's other places that we have to do. The pharmacy's here in town, and I can pull this. Three or four of them, well, three, made over $2.6 billion on our opioid, on our... They made that much, and this is only the membership in the town of Carson, it's 3,500 people. How can that be? That this town should probably only have one pharmacy to support a $3,500, or a $35, 3,500 population of. So we need to build a healthy relationship first of all. We need to have meaningful engagement. That means that you need to come to us and say, how can we do this? Not, here's the answer, or, let's have dialogue, and let's build a healthy relationship. Our community, our First Nation community, and the town of Carson, and the majority of the population of their community have two different lifestyles. One believes in can't drink coffee, can't smoke cigarettes, our bodies are temple. So do we. But because of our historical trauma, and some of the atrocities that have occurred in the past, we are still in our Holocaust. So if you, we can go out and educate because we have four pillars that we're hoping to address, and that's education and justice. Because we're also dealing with abuses only, you know, with all four. So education, justice, the socioeconomic, and the medical people. So that's what's happened historically, is that because of this stigma, our people have been victimized and re-victimized. And we have, as you know, probably, because of documentation that we just got recently, that there's been brutal fatalities and deaths that have occurred in this community. And all I'm saying is, can we please work together? Can you please try and understand what our people are going through? Can you please work together and engage with us meaningfully and have that compassion? But ask us first, please ask us. Because we wouldn't come into your home without asking you. We wouldn't come into your life without asking you. So just come and ask us, that's all. Like I said, Suzanne and some of the chaplains, chaplain on the other side, have saved our people's lives. We're still dealing with it, we're having, we just had a death today, three days ago. Last year, there was, like, it was, we were having deaths as a result of this crisis. But if you look at this community in particular, we also deal with EKAs and people that, there's different names that we pay the debt to. So some have mental health issues as a result, long-term, okay? But it's just about educating one another and even compassionate. So that's all that we wanted to do this summer, is to say, come in. We never said, don't come to our camp. We invited people to come and say, let's talk. Because there was a word out there, we weren't, we weren't the only people all coming. But, so if you want any meaningful engagement, if you'd like to have some meaningful consultation, all you have to do is ask. In a way, that's not just a phone call, like a phone call, come to a meeting, or email and say, oh, there's a meeting tonight. There's other ways that you need to engage meaningfully.
If I could just add that, I mean, I think, so both of our backgrounds are probably- If I could just add, I mean, I think, so both our backgrounds in public health, I spent my first 10 years working with First Nations, including Blackfeet. And actually, the impetus for the program that we run with Alberta Health Services was in collaboration with Chief Charlie, and you're right, this could never have happened without engagement with, not just him, but his own consultation with what we would call referendary leadership, people with, like, community power elders who could give guidance to him, even though the chief, but give guidance, meaningful guidance to him about which way should we go with this problem. Not just because it was the right thing to do, but actually, a lot of the things that we talked about with what strengthens young people from risks of all sorts of social problems, the health problems, a lot of that wisdom comes from, in my understanding, First Nations ways of knowing and doing things. And the First Nations ways of seeing things. I have learned a lot from Blackfoot people about what community actually means, and some of the allegories, for example, how a TPI is built, and how that reflects how a community is supposed to function, actually is the stuff that we're talking about. Right? That's how we get ourselves out of problems like this and strengthen ourselves for problems that will come in future, is by tapping into that wisdom and following it. The other thing that I would just add is that, you know, you put out there that a lot of the poly-drug use happens in First Nations around this area, but most people don't know that amongst Canadians, Indigenous people are more likely to abstain from all substances than most other Canadian groups. Meaning that an Indigenous person in Canada is more likely to abstain from alcohol, cigarettes, sorry, not cigarettes, alcohol, all other illicit and illicit substances than the background Canadian population. Most people don't understand that. That Indigenous people reject often any substance use, period. But we think that it's very, that abstinence is almost absent in First Nations, it's not. So a lot of First Nation people who don't use anything. And there's something there for us to learn from. So you're right, with historical trauma and everything, yeah, people who use substances with that type of hurt often run into trouble with substances. But there's a lot of folks that we can learn from who found ways, in spite of all that, to not have to look for other, like, external services. Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome to stay on the rest of our meetings.
Are you trying to go?
We just get right on, that's all.
Did you?
Exactly.
I'm guessing we're going to take a break here before we finish.
We're going to have to go for an extension.
Counselors, I just need a motion to recess for a chance to have some to do.
Motion to do that.
All in favor? Thank you. One, two, three, four, at least, create it for them.
Did you get that, Sham? I did. Motion to recess for 15 minutes.